Is Mr. Palin here?
Jeffrey.
Oh yeah, there he is. Jeff. Jeff? Madam Manager recalls meeting order.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Mr. McDowell, Mr. Duval, Mr. Bedura, Ms. Plow, Ms. Devine, Mr. Davis, Mayor Benjamin.
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell, you're my leading sir in vacation.
Good afternoon. We will try to be very efficient with our time. Several items on the agenda, several of which shouldn't really take too long. The first one included... The first one included, I really was just reiterating with council, the October 2016 meeting schedule. Most of you I've either talked in person with, or we've, you know, exchanged emails regarding the schedule. So we wanted to, of course, have a public discussion to make sure everyone is fine with a meeting on October 18th. Work session and council meeting as normal, and then the city council retreat to fall thereafter, October 26th through the 28th. Wanted to make sure all members of council have that on their schedules.
October 18th. Two o'clock.
I always am in favor of two o'clock, but we try to, you know, adhere to the 3:30 that I know we came up with that time as a council at the last retreat. We've had to, depending on what's going on, sometimes adjust. I did say two o'clock for that day because I know we would have only had, you know, the one regular meeting for the month, but we can do 3:30. I posed it to council for some feedback.
I've got two o'clock on my calendar, so right now I'm okay with that.
Yes, ma'am. Well, full disclosure, I actually meant, I intended for two o'clock today. That's why I had all of these items here, but Ms. Moore, I didn't communicate that to Ms. Moore, and she, you know, deferred to the 3:30 time that you all have stated that we'll be doing. My preference is always two o'clock, but we'll try to...
Well, I, you know, sometimes two works, sometimes three is better. Depending on the agenda, I wouldn't just lock two. Prefer it as two, but if the agenda is light, then maybe we can start at three.
My thought is, my preference would be two, and I know that, I think Mr. Bedora has some scheduling issues. What I would do is maybe suggest that anything that he definitely wants to be a part of, we make sure that we don't handle before he gets here.
Yes, ma'am.
But, because I think sometimes he is able to get here at two, and I think that...
Let's just stick with 2:00 P.M.
Okay.
Yeah, and handle any issues as, as suggested.
Yes, sir.
I enjoy spending as much time with these people as possible, so. Twelve, eleven.
So you're saying regular meeting on the 18th, and then our retreat is the 27th and 28th?
Yes, ma'am, and on the 26th, the facilitator will be in contact with y'all beforehand to do some, like, an hour-long interview, very similar to what he did before. Yes, sir, we will. Yes, sir, absolutely.
And that's, that's just Thursday and Friday, not Saturday, right?
That's correct. All day, well, part of the day, Thursday, all day, Friday.
Okay, great, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is number two, the Greenview reunion funding request. The Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
Well, I think we all kind of understand the issue that, that we've been trying to handle with that, and we've received communications from the group. I'm going to, I would like to recommend that we approve $10,000 for the Greenview reunion group.
Second.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, doing an open session, yeah.
Alright.
Mr. Davis, I apologize.
Motion withdrawn, $10,000, eight tax money.
$10,000.
$10,000.
Yes, sir.
We'll take it up this evening.
Our next item will be the conclusion of our Economic Development Partners' presentations for this fiscal year. Mr. Ryan Coleman, Economic Development Director, will introduce our partners.
Is that on, Ryan? Can you hear me now?
Uh, yes.
Glad to welcome our final two partners in today, just to provide some brief updates on their activities during the past year, as well as give you some updates on what we'll be working with our, with our partners over the course of 2016, 2017. So first, I would like to welcome up Ms. Tammy Mainwaring. She's the Chief Operations Officer of ITology, and she will be followed by Mr. Bill Kirkland, the Executive Director of the USC Office of Economic Engagement.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon, Tammy.
Thank you very much for your time today, and for allowing me to come and talk about ITology and the exciting things we're doing. I also want to thank you for your support and partnership of our programs, and I can't wait to tell you what an impact we've made over this past year, and what we plan to do in the future. Now, ITology, our mission is to engage, equip, and connect current and future IT talent, and we do this through high-quality programs and events, and we serve a wide array of audiences. We work with K-12 students, we work with higher education, and we work with the IT professional community. We really want to get the message across that IT really is for everyone. ITology's link to Columbia's workforce development and economic growth is vital. The current and future health of Columbia and South Carolina's economy depends on how effectively we can train our local talent pools to be ready for the jobs that come to South Carolina. ITology's programs help ensure citizens, our citizens, have the education and skills to fill the jobs for the companies that would relocate or begin their roots in South Carolina. So first, I would like for you to look in your packet, and I want to just show you a few highlights of our major programs and what we have accomplished this year with your support. So if you will pull the handout that says "ITology," and it's got three programs across the top. For our IT professionals, we had an IT Trends Conference at the auditorium at ITology, and of course, we look at market trends, and cybersecurity, as you know, is really big now. It's the hot topic. So we had the conference on cybersecurity. We had 285 professionals in attendance, and then I have listed some of the notable speakers that we had there at the conference, and it was a huge success. So for higher education, our flagship program in the middle is Course Power. Now, I did include a booklet in your folder that talks about Course Power. So Course Power is actually a minor in applied computing science. So anyone that goes into a non-IT degree field in the university or the technical schools can still get a minor in applied computing science, which really gives them an edge when they go out in the job market, because if you're in healthcare, manufacturing, media arts, financial, that IT thread runs through. So having that basic knowledge of digital literacy is very important. So you can look at the flyer, and it talks about how students can turbocharge their major, they can earn more money, they can seize opportunity, and then it talks about the career paths of some folks, like healthcare, sales and marketing, engineering, and how having this minor in applied computing can help them succeed. So currently, as far as Columbia and the Midlands, we have four universities and technical schools that are implementing Course Power very effectively. The University of South Carolina, Benedict College, Midlands Technical College, and Columbia College, and it has been a success. In 2015, we had over 2,000 students taking at least one of the courses toward the minor, and up to this point, in 2016, we've had 1,186 take some of the courses toward the minor. And through our research and our look at the market and employment services, we believe that the Course Power program through ITology has played a role in helping higher education increase their enrollment in IT-related courses by 30%. So that's great. Okay, and then we'll look at our K-12 programs last year, but I want to ask you a question to think about first. When a company or an employee is thinking about relocating to Columbia, to this area, and their parents, what do you think would be the first concern or one of the first questions they would have about this area? The schools, what's the quality of the education? Are there after-school programs? Are there enrichment programs? So ITology addresses that. We provide Cyber Saturdays, we have in-school and after-school IT enrichment, and summer cyber camps that were very popular this year. One thing we've started doing is offering these for elementary kids, even as low as the third grade, because we found that these kids can actually code and program, and if we can catch them early, before the pop culture catches them later, they really get engaged and hooked on IT. We teach things like coding, robotics, visual and sound effects, graphics, 3D printing, renewable energy, and many, many more exciting topics. So we have touched more than 48,000 students and about 3,200 educators through our IT programs. So ITology also has formed key partnerships with, of course, the city council, the Office of Economic Development, SC Cyber, Apprenticeship Carolina, recruiting firms. We've worked a lot with the Department of Commerce and the Department of Education, and many of our school districts in this area. And we also produced a major research report in partnership with MIBA, the Midlands Education and Business Association, and that is also in your folder that you can review at your leisure, but this report be a part of information technology. And on the first page, it talks about some statistics in South Carolina, and then it goes on to talk about what are the median salaries, how popular are these types of IT jobs, what skills do you need for these types of IT jobs, and at the back, it gives some very helpful resources, information technology resources, and then many of our online resources, which includes links to the universities. So we published this report this year. So that's what we've done, and so very quickly, if you look at the final brochure, this is the one that is hot off the press, we are very proud, these are our future upcoming programs and events, and again, I won't walk through every one, I'll let you do that at your leisure, but I think it's very important what it says on the first page. Grow yourself, change the world, and that's our message to everyone. With IT, you can grow yourself and change the world. And so if you look through, we have all of our K-12 programs. Something new we're adding this year is a robotics competition. The neat thing about our robotics competition is it's very affordable. Many of the competitions cost more, but we have worked with the Cyber Innovation Center, and we're able to do a robotics competition at a much cheaper price, so more kids can participate. We are going to start offering cyber field trips out to ITology to do hands-on activities. We posted this about five days ago, we already have seven field trips booked, so this is going to be very popular in our schools. And then next, we have professional development, we work a lot with teachers, because what we have found, and I'm sure you know, is that teachers impact generations and generations of students. So if you can instill that love of technology in a teacher, they pass it on and on and on. So we try to do that with the teachers, so we can expand our reach to as many students as possible. So we have code.org training, cyber professional development, some really cool lesson plans that aren't even in the IT areas. It might be a history lesson where you integrate IT, or a music lesson where you integrate IT. Very neat activities for all kids to get a taste of what IT is like. And then we have Course Power, these are our IT career prep offerings, and we talked about Course Power. We have an IT Career Development Institute, where we're offering workshops for IT soft skills. That's one thing we found when we taught the recruiters, they say these kids coming out of college are great, they have the technical skills, they're smart. What they don't have are the soft skills, and so there are certain soft skills needed in an IT environment especially, so we're zooming in on some of those and providing workshops. We also have WISE, which is Women in IT Science and Engineering. This is important because we want to encourage diversity in our IT workforce, and we want to get rid of all those stereotypes and have a very diverse workforce in IT. One last thing I'll mention, our president, Lonnie Emmard, has been contracted with the National Governors Association, and they hold South Carolina up as a model of apprenticeship. We have a great apprenticeship program here, and so Lonnie has been contracted to go to other states like New Mexico and Montana and Florida, and advise them on how to set up registered apprenticeships. So this is something very exciting as well. So that's a quick overview of what we've done and what we have coming, and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Davis?
Very good. Just one, one question, the collaboration with the, with the schools, district, how is that really going? Kids are, is it voluntary, or are we, are you actually, I don't know if it's contracting or you're making the pitch in terms of the availability of, of the, of the programs?
What, excuse me, what we do is a variety of different things, and we will do customized programs, but for example, Computer Science Education Week. Our K-12 director went out and did code.org workshops, and during school, she would go to classes for teachers and do the coding activity, and this was free of charge. Sometimes the schools get the 21st Century Grants or some other grants, and they will want to write ITology in to come like two days a week for 45 minutes after school and provide a certain curricula around IT. And just last Saturday, August 27th, we had a huge girls' cyber day at Allen University, and we partnered with the Department of Energy, and I think it might have been $5, you know, a student to come, so it's very cheap, and they got t-shirts, and they got to see the houses with renewable energy, and it was just for girls, trying to get girls interested. And we've already had tons of requests, what about a boys' day? So we're already thinking about how to do something for the young men as well. So it's a variety of things we can do. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Duval?
With a conglomeration of companies in Columbia that put it together, do you have a listing of those? I don't see one, I looked through here quickly, but I didn't...
Yeah, I do, I might have to get that. It was the Consortium for Enterprise Resource Management, and it was IBM, the University of South Carolina, Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Bill? The consortium, do you...
VC3.
VC3, yep. And I can, I can go back and look and get you the names if there are any others in that partnership.
That's good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Alright.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Ryan, and Mayor Benjamin, and Teresa Wilson and team, I really appreciate your time. I want to go, first I want to thank a couple people, and then I want to talk about where we are and... we are and kind of the excitement of where we're going. And I need to thank Miss Gentry and team and folks who we're working with on our new incubator. And I'll educate Howard and Mr. McDowell on certain things we're doing and take you through that, because it's our first time together. But really to let you know what the incubator is, if you go down, I'd love for y'all to tour sometimes. I know that everybody from, I know Mayor Benjamin and Tamika, they've all been there before. We're located down here in the old, it's a city of Columbia building, corner of Sumter and Laurel. We're holding it together with Band-Aids and duct tape and everything else, but it's one of your buildings. We're excited and thank y'all. We've been there for a little over 10 years, and I appreciate the support on a lot of things, like a new boiler we got two years ago, Band-Aid the water cooling towers. It's all working well, but you know what? We've got, if you'll notice, look in your packet, we have 48 little companies in that building. So I've always challenged Mayor Benjamin and Councilmember Devine on the economic development side, the return on investment on what you're putting in our building in comparison to most other economic development entities. I challenge to show a better value and a better return on investment. So I'm always up for those questions. I know you'll hit me with them. I know you're thinking about them. I'll get them in a minute. But if we can just go in this, I want to take you through where we are again and where we're going. If you look again, we have 48, excuse me, 48 incubator companies, summer affiliates. Look at just the amount of revenue coming through our building. It's a little over $35 million in revenue every year, at least this year, coming through that little building on the corner. About 223 people, give or take some, coming and going, are in our building every day. A lot of full-time and part-time. That is, I think, probably Mayor Benjamin doubled in the last three or four years, something like that. I can go back and reflect on it. By putting the right programs in place, about 69% of them, give or take a little, live in Richland County. And I'm trying to break out the city of Columbia, but that impact goes across the entire city and the county. We've really been successful this year delivering programs. We have not only just a place where you pay for, you pay rent, actually it's about $13.50 a square foot, lower than market rate for our tenants. What they get is mentoring, they get seminars, they get, for what it's worth, access to me and some other mentors as executive director. They get real-life coaching. Mr. Val, I've run a company, sold a company, and I've got a couple decades of Fortune 50 company experience. So, and we have members of our board like Mayor Benjamin, Ryan Coleman, also Don Tomlin, Pete Strom. The list goes on and on, people that are actually on the board, but they're very active in the mentoring of companies. We play COO, CFO, everything else for our little companies. If you look at just in 2016, what we've accomplished to date on just hosting over 500 people in our building, 35 seminars and events. I won't go through that. Some of you guys have that in your packet, but I do want to highlight a couple things. We have every year a Global Entrepreneur Week here, which people come from around the world to Columbia, and it's really focused, and it's a national thing. We've always been the one to lead that. We take leadership of that. But also last year, I mean, there was over 1,000 attendees in Columbia. We have it coming up again on November 11th to the 20th. Again, there'll be programs at our incubator, at the university. I think Mayor Benjamin's attended several of them. So it's a real big event for us here in the city of Columbia, your incubator. It's your incubator leads that. But I do want to point out something that my team, and Chad Hardaway's here, most of y'all know Chad, we have Jack Beasley, who's new, is really our manager of the building, our director, who's running the operations, and Caroline Crowder, who just started, and she's still here, by the way, Tamika, a week later. Carolina's still with us. That's a big deal, Teresa, I know. She's putting up with me, but she's still with us. She's still with us after a week. They're here. What's interesting, we've started now going more out for feedback from our existing clients, but also our graduates, asking us what we can do better. We were the top, one of the top three incubators to watch in the nation three years ago, and I'm figuring out how do we get back there again, have Inc. Magazine cover us again. So what we're doing is we're actually doing a lot of surveys, and you'll notice in the plans part for this year, we had an overall value of four and a half to five, and the value of education and mentoring of three and a half to five. So we are right now looking at the overall value. Our tenants and graduates see us about around a four out of five. That's a good score, not good enough. And if you look at the education mentoring quality, it's three and a half to five. I can get you, I could provide you a copy of that survey at any point if you wanted to look at it. But I'm real proud of that. That means we're doing our job versus just giving them, you know, lesser than below-market rent. The other thing we're working with at Cyclone of Commerce on is a Launchpad program, where we're using different technologies and different ways to attract companies. Company shows up here, how can we land them, show them how good Columbia is, and hopefully they'll stay. So we're trying to work with Commerce on something they call Launchpad. The last thing, it's real important, trying to set up a formal, real formally mentoring program for our client, for our customers, and we're using a venture mentoring service, which is really based out of MIT, and it's around more team-based mentoring, not Bill talking to Teresa, but having a team mentor around Teresa's little company versus just listening to me. So we're working on that, and it's coming together well. A couple of things that aren't highlighted on your, on the form is last, the last two years, 24 months with Chad Hardaway's been leading, we've got over eight and a half million in small business innovation rewards from the EDA. And that's all about taking technology from university, matching it with a CEO or a startup, and then they get funding from the government. That's non-dilutive grant money, which is like, I mean, that is what you want as an entrepreneur. You don't want to give away equity if you get grants. But Chad Hardaway's been leading that initiative, and again, a little bit, I must say, a little over eight and a half million we've seen in SBI IR rewards in the last 24 months. We're actually leading that effort for the state now, working with folks in Charleston and in USC Upstate to try to, how do we do the same thing in other cities? And that's part of my job at the University of South Carolina is to do that for Bobby Hitt. If I can, if you can just go, that's where we are, and I don't need to read through all the things you have in your packet, but the thing that's really kind of neat is you turn to the second page, and I want to watch to me get excited about our cool little building. And I'm originally from Olympia. My dad was from there, and I was birthed there. They would say I was born there. My dad was a Linhead from day one, and Mayor Benjamin knew my dad, so it was kind of, that was his world. So I'm happy we're actually putting the incubator in my village. I'll call it my village. I still have family there. You have to actually be a Linhead to be buried in Olympia Cemetery, and I can actually get in there. Apparently that's an honor. I didn't know that, but apparently I'm honored now to get in the Olympia Cemetery, because I went to St. Louis Lutheran Church my whole life. So, but I'm really excited. This is a picture, and I'll get you bigger pictures. This is actually a picture, this is about 90% final, and I'll get you, I'll get everyone a better, Sam, Mr. Davis, I'll get you a better, a larger picture. I saw you look at me, but I'll get you bigger pictures, but this is just one view. This is right behind, this is the corner of Don Tomlin Way, if Mayor Benjamin and I like to say, but the old Catawba, right behind 701 Whaley is the contact. So that end down there, there's really been a wasteland. Used to be a fertilizer plant. We've had EPA things, we've worked around it, but that end's going to be what I like to think is the start of a technology renovation of that whole area along Catawba. You've got SCRA on one end, and you have the incubator on the other, and hopefully they'll all come together at some point. So we're real excited. Again, we got 1.91 million from the EDA, and they won't pay for the dirt, but they pay for the infrastructure. Mayor Benjamin was there when we actually announced that award. The second picture you left is a copy of, it's really a print of what the atrium's going to look like. We're putting a lot of funding into making the atrium really nice. We can do programs there, but also when you walk in, the first thing you see as a startup is, wow, there's a little shock value here, it's positive. And then from that, you go up to the second floor, which will be really for incubators only, and then the third floor will be for what we call landing pad, or companies that are kind of mid-stage, that need someplace to be, to work, and then grow out of the incubator. So we've got three stages there. The first floor's going to be a lot around partnering. The SBDC, which we're working with, along with some stuff, the university will be stationed on the first floor. So again, I don't think we can get any better in our incubator. We are, if you go by there now, there's actually an EDA, you haven't seen it yet, right down there is a cool, big, rather large board that says it's EDA funding, you know, President Obama. It's neat, and it's for the US, it's a grant from the EDA. We hope in next week or two, we'll actually turn some dirt. Not a formal groundbreaking, because we have to still do RFPs on the site work and then a construction RFP, but I'd hope to say, Lord willing, that this time next year, when I stand up here, or maybe we'll do this in our, in our beautiful new building, but I won't have to say, you know, I'm worried about the water cooling tower and all that. We'll actually have a really interesting, cool building. We do plan on taking a good percentage of our companies with us. I'll be working with Ryan Coleman and his leadership, and I do want to thank Ryan for everything he's done for the incubator. He's on our board along with the mayor. But interestingly enough, we're going to do a good assessment on how we go about doing what we need to do, and the ones that maybe don't fit the new description of, or we'll find a place to land them, working with Tina Herbert and your folks with the city. So I hope I didn't take too long. Is there any questions?
Fine, no. No, but it's exciting for all parties involved. I would like to thank the president and Secretary Pritzker and Assistant Secretary Jay Williams for Commerce Department and EDA's support of this. They get a lot of thanks, but really you guys get a lot of praise. You guys have done a great job at the incubator, and it's one of our success stories, and I can only imagine how so many more companies are going to prosper in this new, this new space once it's up and running. So keep up the great work.
And one thing I wish, and I know that Mayor Benjamin does, is in all your talking points, if we can, especially with our new building coming, if we can just start really talking, and I'll get you the points, the talking points for our incubator, these are hard dollars. This isn't vaporware, as I would say in the, in the software world. These are hard dollars. One example, and Mayor Benjamin's been very involved with T-Cube, which is one of our companies that I helped, I was mentoring, it was two people, his husband and his wife, three years ago, and they've now got over 85 people in their incubator ready to graduate, at an average salary of about $60,000 a year. That's real dollars. And they're not leaving Columbia. We worked hard to make sure they don't leave Columbia. They've had large accounting firms here. I've met with them, Dr. Pastides has met with them, to try to do our best to ensure they stay here. Mayor Benjamin and I have been working on that pretty hard. But again, that's 85 from two people. I'm not going to, it was two, a husband and wife, no revenue, can't really go into the revenue because it's confidential, but it's added in this 35 million from zero to over 85 people today, and I think they'll be at 100 within the next couple of months. That's your incubator in that little building. So something to be proud of, very proud of.
Absolutely. Ms. Davis?
Some of your spin-off companies, do you assist them with locations, the ones that you want to keep here in the area?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I do. I work with Ryan, I work with the folks at, Jeff Ruble, Richland County. Our membership, the leadership of our incubator is Richland County, City of Columbia, and Lexington County, and Midlands Tech provides support. We also have Wells Fargo and Blue Cross Blue Shield and a couple others. But the main municipalities here are actually parts of Richland, Lexington, and the city of Columbia. So we ensure our best to make sure they stay in the metropolitan area, and I can say most of them, you know, as far as I, I give you the hard data, are staying somewhere close to downtown. And they spin off little companies that, we have another example of one that started in our incubator, hooked up with another company or incubator, and then they took, they graduated from the incubator, and they went down to Idea Labs at the university, which is a wet lab space, which you guys might want to tour someday. It's made up for university researchers or folks in the private sector that partner with the university. It's a wet lab incubator. That company got together, we went from 10% occupancy of our wet lab space to 100%, because two entrepreneurs got together in an incubator, graduated, and went into the wet lab space, and they get ready now to graduate from the wet lab space, and guess what? They're still in the city of Columbia. They're going out toward Irma. So it's Andrew Lee and team. I think you've met him before, Mr. Mayor. Idea Labs is another example of our partnership with EDA. They funded the outfit of that entire first floor of our, where my office sits in Horizon 1. It's a pretty cool story of how it's working.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you all.
We will now have our Geography Information System and Public Facing Web Applications to be presented by our GIS administrator, Mr. Sunjong Kim. We're doing pretty well on time. I know Sunjong is going to keep us on task, so we can finish in a timely manner, like for you all to go, be done by 5:00.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to present today. My overview of presentation, I'll briefly describe what GIS is, and share with you our public-facing GIS web applications, and I'll wrap up my presentation with a demo. So what is GIS? Geographic Information System is a computer system for capturing, storing, manipulating, analyzing, and presenting all types of geographical data. GIS enables us to view, understand, question, and interpret, and visualize our world in ways that we view patterns, relationships, and trends for the purpose of finding solutions or answers to our real-world problems or solutions. So how does GIS represent our world? GIS represents our world through world objects, through points and lines and polygons in layers. Each layer contains the same feature type. As you can see on the diagram, Customer's Layer contains the customer location as a point feature, and Boundary Layer contains city boundaries, a polygon layer. These features are specially related to one another within the same layer or different layers. This special relationship makes GIS so powerful. So how does GIS answer to our question? Here's a question. Is Customer A located within City B? Customer A is in Customer's Layer as a point, and City B is a boundary polygon in Boundary's layer. So if Customer Layer intersects with a City B boundary, the answer is yes. Even you can see visually, when we go from top to bottom, drill down approach, you'll see Customer is definitely located within City B. It is very simple, but it's very powerful. GIS consists of five components: software, hardware, data, and people, GIS professionals, and methodology. Without any one of these components, GIS cannot function properly. So we have desktop and server software and hardware. We have 300 GIS layers and 50-plus GIS users with five dedicated GIS professionals, and we use proper methodology to ensure that our GIS work is valid and accurate. And also, we have multiple automation tools to process and update GIS data. And we present our GIS data and information through public-facing GIS web applications and through our city-wide GIS viewer. We launched our public-facing GIS application in early April. The challenges were that we often received requests, inquiries from our citizens asking about whether their property or address is located within the city limit. It's a very simple question, yes or no. To answer this question, we map, locate our customer's address, and overlay with our city boundary. If customer location, just like shown, the diagram falls within the city limit, the answer is yes. It is easy to do it. It's fine, but it takes time and also research. We have to go through different channels to come to GIS. So the solution was that, why not come over to the public-facing GIS web applications so that public, our citizens can come directly to our site and be able to find answers for So how did we do it? It was a city-wide collaborative effort. We deeply involved with departments in development stage, and we also involved with the city-wide testing. We utilize state-of-the-art technology for device independence. These are web applications, so as long as there is a web browser in a device, whether it's in a computer, tablets, or even smartphone, it works well with that web browser. And we took the keep-it-simple solutions approach, make it simple, don't make it complicated. So we came up with the four solutions. City Information Viewer, this is our flagship application that displays city-relevant information. And Court Violation Properties Viewer displays court enforcement cases for the past 60 days. And Landmarks Viewer displays city-designated landmarks with the pictures along with the descriptions. And City Parks Finder, because it displays city parks, and also we can search parks based on name or address, or even a many types. For example, if you want to find a park that has a tennis court and restroom, they'll be able to specifically for that park if there is at least one or more. So I'll wrap up my presentation with this demo, our flagship application. We wanted to go to the where we were. Easiest way to find is going to City Maps. This is our landing page, have a full application with a description, and we have also download site, pre-made maps can be downloaded. So City Information Viewer. It's a very simple application, displays city boundary, and asking users' input. This, when you use a cellphone, the screen that you see right now is based on laptop or a desktop size. But if you use a smaller screen, such as your smartphone, only input you will see the asking address. It works with the user's input address. So as long as there's an address, you work well. So if I type our city hall's address, you stop, you start typing, it finds the address, it will pick up quickly, but sometimes it has to search, depends on the internet connection and everything, so you'll find the address. Okay, there's the address. Just click the input address, it will find the information on the bottom. We have a city-related information, zoning-related information, curbside pickup information, and water and sewer service, and election polling information. I'll just go briefly with this one. City information, of course, one of the most asked questions, am I within the city limit or not? Yes, make it easy to yes or no. Which council district? We have a council's website, and we have additional links with, this is our pictometry viewer. Pictometry is a oblique view imagery, be able to see side of the buildings, especially if you're seeing a build. This is our city hall, looking at the south view of it, and there is way to see in different angles, four different angles, south, and we are seeing as east view in different ways. And also, this view, pictometry, will be able to measure the heights of the building, lengths of the building, even you can do area of the rooftop. So it's very useful, but this can be only used in our user access base. So within the city departments, we'll be able to use this application internally, but for the public, we'll only be able to view the imagery. And also, put add a Google. Google is pretty popular, so we'll let Google decide how information about it as well. And also, we have zoning-related ones. One of them be able to use is that we directly link to the county's Texas Census information. So if it's in Richland County, we'll go to Richland, Texas Census site, and if it's Lexington, we'll go directly to Lexington's site. Also, we have a curbside pickup, provide water and sewer service information, also election polling locations, and also, we put a Google Street View in case the buildings, they are not familiar, so at least to be able to see the building of that polling location. That's all I have.
I'm sure Missy can figure out what question I'm about to ask, but is there a way to add an application so that someone can look and put in their address and find out if they're under a boil water advisory? That has been confusing people a lot. If they're under a boil water advisory. So like, when they issue them, I know they're not out long, but would there be, Missy, is there a way that y'all could give the information so that that is updated on the website and someone could click in their address and know whether or not they're currently under an advisory?
It's possible. It's doable.
The issue would probably be the timing of it and the staff to do it. I mean, because those come at such different times of the day and night, but I'm sure there is a way to do it.
This application, see, it's very simple, but behind the things, it will take every weekly, there's updating six to seven hours to run it, the automation stuff, to try to pull the old information, the data. So it's doable, possible, but its timing is very crunching for that case.
Good question.
Mr. Duval.
Very good presentation. I'm impressed. Are we using the base layers that the Richland County GIS also has, or are we developing our own base layers?
We do not have a base map at this point. We use ASRI, that's the company that we use the software, they have a pretty decent, there is a different types of base layer, we can use imagery, but we do not have the base map. We use the publicly-available base map.
Okay. Is this the GIS system that's also working in the Water and Sewer Department to map the lines and all? We've got, we hired two people, I believe, a month or so ago to run GIS. So this GIS system is one for the whole city?
This is a public-facing side of it. So we have internally, Titleway, they have another internal GIS viewer for the, you know, citywide viewer to be able to use it for the water and sewer. We have also tablet to go out, our wastewater crew to be able to locate assets and find the information about it.
I know I came in late in your presentation, the only thing, or a couple of things are caught up, is the election polling places and how you located the actual polling place. But the common, the most common question I get around election is when somebody calls me, whether they live in my district, or Ed's district, or Sam's district, is there any way that you can link somebody's address to identify whether their district one, two, or three, or four?
Within that, if I get your question right, within our city information has a city council district information available.
They're not, the city council districts are showing only the maps, but actually there's no way that you can put somebody's address to see whether you're in district one, two, or three?
During the election season, I worked with the GIS department to create that map.
You mean the...
So like, he put in an address, Main Street, we can tell the city information, so it tells you, yes, you're in the district two.
Cool, thank you. Thank you, she answered.
We have another, the application is have a code violations that's, if I have time...
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
That's per district or...
So we have another application will display, this also has a court violation associated with each court cases will have that district information, which council, if I just click one of them, I just give a court information. We have neighborhood association, council district, and the cases of the court, be able to search based on types of the court, which court cases, or be able to search based on the case. And also, this is a neighborhood basis. If I just want to see anything to the Arsenal Hill neighborhoods, if you apply, then we'll find all the court cases associated with that neighborhood, have that selected.
Now, when that happens, do you, when a code, when a code is, when it's, when you see it on your, on your system, does it say whether or not it's, I know it's a code, does it say whether or not that code has been rectified?
Yes. The cases there, the code status will be whether it's in violation. So each cases will have that information, code status, whether it's in open or violation, resolved, closed cases.
You would only see it if there had been a citation, a code citation. I think what Ms. McDowell wants to know is, does it detect a violation before we send our inspectors out there and write them a ticket?
It's probably, is it before or after?
Once the case, it's once our inspectors through David's office have put in the violations, and then started a case.
And that's when it hits.
Yes, when they go out and seize it.
If it would do the first thing, we wouldn't need inspectors. We would just turn on the GIS and mail them a citation.
Like, with the, I'm not sure I'm following that, but, okay. Like by magic?
Well, I think...
Like cameras, or...
I think Ms. McDowell wondered, the question was, would it be able to detect violations without our inspectors going out there? And it won't do that. Our inspectors have to go find the violation and put it into the system before it shows up.
Yeah, once they put into system, we just go pull the database and...
If you could use that Google overfly, or that, what you call the photometrics, if the photometrics were good enough so that they could spot a violation...
We'd be in good shape. Well, that's what I was looking for. When it starts, when it's resolved, and once it's resolved, we're done.
Once resolved, we would say that court cases are closed.
Too many liabilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sun John. Ms. Gentry will come forward, our Assistant City Manager of Operations, to discuss the next two items. The first is our parking system discussion and upcoming recommendations, just preparing council for recommendations that I know most of you are aware of, we'll be bringing forward.
So as the city manager said, we just, it's been a while since we've talked about parking and some of the changes that are being recommended. So we really wanted to just give a high-level overview of what staff is working on and we're preparing in the coming meetings to bring proposed changes to our ordinance. The first being changing many of the violations from criminal to civil, and that's been an ongoing conversation between multiple departments at the city, including municipal court, parking services, and Columbia Police Department. So we're working on that process and the changes that are needed to the ordinance to make that change. As part of that, we will also create a appeal process for civil infractions. Right now, the appeals go to court as well. Any questions about that? Yes, sir.
Missy, when Roy Bates was working with, he always worked with the municipal association, but when he was actually our general counsel over there, he taught in our classes that the parking meter violations were always civil because they could not be criminal. Today, I think Dana has sent out a little briefing that's been floating around for a couple of years that backs that up with the reasonings why they have to be civil. So I was surprised when I saw your thing, trying to make them civil instead of criminal. I always thought there were civil violations.
And again, that's been a long-going conversation between multiple departments, so we just need to change our ordinance to make that clear. We're also looking at changing ordinances to really just make them up-to-date with current practices. Some of what's in the ordinance is outdated as far as the way we take payments. It doesn't reflect some of the current payment methods, and we'll address some loading zone times and then parker, parking meter zones. Probably the biggest part of the discussion will involve extending enforcement hours, and you've probably heard from some of the hospitality districts, there's a big push in some areas to extend hours of enforcement. There's some hesitation from some other areas to do that. Currently, we have a lot of people that come in on Friday and park their cars. Maybe they're visiting citizens of the city, and they park their cars in our meters and know that we don't enforce at night and on weekends, so they just leave them there and take that space up all weekend. So we're looking at changing our enforcement, really to generate the turnover that our businesses need. In consistent with that, we're also looking at some changes that will allow us to use contract labor to help us manage that enforcement rather than add a whole new slew of staff to our team. And then the last change would be revisiting the suggestions for parking rate changes, and really, that would be some modifications to the rates to include increases to the hourly rates, a dynamic pricing model, meaning you charge different rates based on time of day and based on demand, so we're looking at that option. And then changing some rates in the parking garages to help encourage unreserved spaces rather than reserved, so we can generate the turnover there as well. That's a really high-level overview. We didn't want to bring back the ordinance without having the conversation because it's been so long since we've talked about it.
We want to make sure the consensus from council two is to bring back all of those items. I mean, obviously, enforcement discussion, the change in the hours of enforcement and how we enforce is certainly of concern to, I know, a lot of our hospitality districts, and I know you all have heard from them, you know, the discussion will definitely have to entail how we decide to do that, if you do move forward collectively with all hospitality districts or not.
I haven't heard as many complaints from the CBD and Vista as I have from Five Points, and we're big enough that we can, we can police them differently. But I have heard very clearly from Five Points that it's important to them, and I'd support that.
They're definitely the dominant hospitality district who wants it. There's some concern. I think if they had to choose, they would say do it all, so it's fair treatment, and people can't claim they're going to one of the other areas because they don't have to pay. But from what I hear, and Amy Beth is here as well, if they had to choose, they'd rather go it alone if that's the only option. Staff, we prefer to have an ordinance that covers all the districts equally. Obviously, the demand on the turnover will help us focus where we put our staff, and we really focus on enforcement. So if we were to change the ordinance for all three districts, we could ramp that up as the need is there. I mean, certainly, as we see all of the student housing projects coming online in all three of the districts, the need for the turnover will follow in Main Street and in the Vista as it exists in Five Points.
Have we heard from the Vista or CCP? Have we heard?
We've talked to all three districts. Main Street was probably the most resistant to it, and just expressed some concerns about doing it.
I mean, I don't think we need to, you know, pay everything with a broad brush. I think we're large enough that we can, we can approach things, you know, in portions, and it might yield some fruit that universal approach might, might need to be. I wouldn't do it just out of matter of course.
Yeah, and I agree. I think we need to be cautious about that, and I think, you know, Divine Street, it's, I don't know that they would like to patrol and the parking meters or anything, because once you go on Divine Street, you, you know, you go and dine and you shop, and you, I mean, hour to hour is really not enough. I mean, I understand the concerns with Five Points, it's been a concern for a while, but I don't, you know, I think we need to be cautious how we move forward on that.
And we can certainly, it can evolve over time. If we implement it in the Five Points area, and that pushes people to park their cars in other areas and leave them, we can certainly bring that back as well.
What's the conversation relative to handicap parking?
As far as...
Reserve handicap parking.
There are no current conversations going on as far as changing anything about what's in place.
It certainly would seem applicable for me and for many others who has to have that kind of parking accessibilities, to have that conversation, some conversation relative to that.
Currently, you are able to park in a handicap space as long as you have the appropriate decal, and you can stay there all day. There's actually no time...
So it doesn't change, nothing changes.
Nothing changes about that.
All right. Is there...
You do have to have the appropriate decal, though.
With a handicap, with a handicap placard?
With a handicap placard.
So we're not looking for any additional handicap parking spaces?
We are not currently.
Now, is it clear then that...
And we're not looking to change anything about how we enforce handicap spaces. That will all remain the same. So as long as you have the appropriate decal, you can continue to park in those spaces.
Even if you park at a meter?
Right, yes, sir.
So this is good discussion for us as we prepare to bring the recommendations back to you. I'm going to talk with staff, Teresa... I'm going to talk with staff, Teresa and our site barring. I was under the impression we'd had some legal review as well, so we'll make sure that's happened.
And one more thing, the, if I remember correctly, I know we've had this discussion about eight months ago. And I think, you know, going, charging different rates or going up on the rates for meters, there were some concerns from businesses, especially in the downtown area, how, I don't think they were very acceptable to that theory or that recommendation. So, you might want to, I'm not really sure what was the feedback from other businesses around that, whether hospitality district or business district to look into that and be careful about how we move forward on that.
And certainly, any rate recommendations or changes would have to be voted on by council. But, but again, we just wanted to bring the subject back up and it, it was mixed reviews from different areas as normal, but we would certainly come back to council with any changes.
Do you, and I, once again, it's been awhile since we had the discussion. Was there any study, any impact to study whether the parking fees were increased, would affect the business or the hospitality district at all when it comes to economic impact?
There was a parking master plan that looked at the system. It did not look at the impact to the businesses. Parking, really, the reason you charge for parking is to generate the turnover for the businesses. So, the reason you would do dynamic parking is at, for instance, at lunchtime, you would, you may charge more for the meters closest to the businesses and farther out, you would charge less for those to make sure you're getting your turnover. But no, sir, there was not a impact study for the business.
And I, and I'm, and I'm not saying that you might want to look into that or hire in somebody to do that. But it's something that you want to, you know, kind of keep it in the back of your mind. Because I know businesses promote parking and free parking to compete with each other all the time. But, so we don't want to give them another option or something that, you know, would probably deter people from going to one side of the town to go to somewhere else. So, keep that in mind.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let me just throw something out. We have parking around the building where we pay our taxes. It just seems to me that it's almost like when someone goes to pay their taxes and they're, I hear all the time that we aren't giving back what we ought to give back. Is there any way that some conversation could be generated to allow thirty to forty-five minutes of free parking time to pay your taxes? I know that's, I know that's, I ran into that, and that's why I'm bringing it up. I couldn't find a park. And I did have my placard.
The street parking, Robert McDowell? The street parking on Hampton Street, is that what you're asking about? The street parking on Hampton Street?
Hampton and Harden?
Yeah, the street parking.
Yes.
The, the lot in the back is the county's. The street parking is ours. That's what you're referring to?
That's great.
Yes, sir. I suppose if that's what you all want us to do.
I'm, I'm just simply saying, folk are paying taxes.
Enforcement of thirty minutes free and then you pay is going to be very difficult because we do, we're not there every thirty minutes. We can certainly have any conversation council wants to have. That's going to be very difficult. And, and again, the reason you have meters is to create the turnover. It's really not a, it is a revenue generator. That's not the reason we have paid meters. It's to create the turnover for the businesses or the venues that people are going to.
But it certainly gives the constituents at least a view that something is being done to perhaps, in a very minute and small way, an avenue in a venue to sort of park, pay their taxes, and leave. Just some, something to think about.
And I guess, I, I, I know exactly what he's talking about, and I think, I mean, maybe there's a way to look at that. But the flip side of that is there are other things in that building, and people do go in there to meetings or other stuff, and they're there longer than thirty minutes. And so, if people park and stay there a long time, then the people who are coming to pay their taxes won't have the ability for, for more spots. So, I wonder if there is, you know, a possibility, you know, how you put a sign up and saying, you know, parking while paying taxes only. I mean, not, and again, I know that would be hard for enforcement, but maybe there's a happy medium in there. Because I think, I think you'd run in a problem of no turnover if you made them all free.
Yeah, I, I think you're absolutely right. We hadn't had that conversation. I think we ought to have a conversation similar to that, similar to this. So that if there are some parameters, we need to, my thing is that I think persons who are paying their taxes and then having to meterize themselves, I mean, it, it becomes a little burdensome. So, I think that there could perhaps be a happy medium somewhere down the road.
There, the passport system, which is the pay-by-fund system, offers some opportunities going forward for, really, we were talking businesses to offset the cost of parking if they chose to do that. That may be a conversation with the county for people paying their taxes. I don't know if the county's going to want to do that, but we could certainly pursue that. And then with it being after the fact, I don't know how that would work either, but we'll look into it.
And in the spirit of this great community service, I'm willing to stand on the corner by Rita and with a, with a roll of quarters and do my duty on behalf of our citizens. All right? I'm Mr. Duval.
Oh, one of the, one way we can give immediate relief is there are two parking spots in front of the election voting office that are reserved for Richland County deputies only. I have never seen a deputy's car parked in those two spots. And I think our high sheriff would probably be delighted to give up those two spaces, and we could have it for reserved for taxpayers only.
So, y'all will ponder-
With two parking stations, yeah.
With the sheriff in-
We're going to let you all broach those issues with your counterparts in the county, elected officials?
Well, the sheriff and the chief and Mr. Davis and I collectively spent twelve hours of their praying, so we might be able to pray over this and get something done. All right?
I'm sure y'all will come up with the best-
So, how, how quickly can we make something happen if we're going to move forward in Five Points? I know the time is of the essence down there.
We have a draft ordinance that Legal's been working with us on. So, I, I suspect in October, we'll bring the draft ordinance or the ordinance back for approval. And it will take two readings for, before it can be effective.
Can we get it this month?
We can, we can bring it back for a first reading the next meeting, yeah, I would think so. Just that part. So, we went through several different things today, but the-
I'm sorry. Oh, but all the, but not fun with all of it. I was just, I was speaking specifically to that, that one portion of it. Everything else, I'm fine with moving forward and everything else.
I think Legal's saying they need to look a little more on the rates discussion, but the enforcement-
Yeah, but everything else, keep coming. We have a schedule on, but let's move a little bit faster on the Five Points. I know it gets, it gets a lot tighter with the students back, so.
If that's finished, we will move into the stormwater discussion.
All right.
So, you do have a memo in today's agenda talking about a possible stormwater bond. We wanted, again, we've talked about that in the past. We wanted to bring back the conversation to make sure that that's still the direction that you would like staff to pursue. It's just a possible stormwater bond in order to really advance a lot of projects that, that otherwise would be pretty far out in our CIP for stormwater. The suggestion a few months ago was increase stormwater fees by two dollars per equivalent residential unit. That would generate an additional two million dollars a year. We as staff, although we have the capability, we would recommend we hire a rate consultant to look at that, to help us look at the projects, look at what form of bond our current rates would support, and then look at what type of increases would be needed to support different levels of CIP projects. So, we are looking at past CIPs, a lot of projects that, if you've been on council for awhile, you will remember have sort of been pending because of the cost of them. So, we would be looking at pulling some of those projects forward if we were to go forward with a bond. But there's a lot of work that would need to be done. We would recommend that we hire the rate consultant and be prepared to have that conversation during the next budget cycle.
Ms., Ms., the Dura and Mr. Davis?
Let me get the floor to Sam first, and then I'll go second. Go ahead.
I, just, just two questions. Do we really need a consultant to do that, given what we do know about projects that are either pending or that we haven't been able to fund? That's number one. The other, so this will mean that projects will be prioritized or would, on the, we would, we would address funding based on the way they're listed now on, on those charts we've looked at?
We would prioritize the projects, and, and you have in the memo the list, how we prioritize right now. But obviously, funding being available bumps projects many times because a lot of your larger projects are, they would exceed the amount of money we spend in a given year for stormwater. So, while we would still use that same priority, having a bond would enable us to pull a lot of projects forward that otherwise are just delayed, and we do in fragments rather than do the whole project holistically. As far as staff being able to do the analysis, we're certainly capable. We would be more comfortable with a consultant helping us through the process. As you know, when you start proposing rate increases, that gets a little challenging sometimes. I know we have not proposed that for stormwater lately, but we would prefer to have a consultant look at that with us and help balance the what-ifs, and if you did this or if you did that. We would want to look at different funding levels for the bond to see how much it would support, how much the different variables of an increase that would be needed to support different levels of project funding. So, we would be more comfortable going through that process with a consultant. We feel like that as it's presented to council during the budget cycle, that both council and the community would appreciate having that consultant's viewpoint on the whole process.
Thank you. Mr. Bedura?
You know, we can discuss the consultant all you want. The best consultants in, in the city is you guys, all the staff, between Robert and everybody else that works on Public Works. I mean, every email that we get when it comes, we, we get a heavy rain or a flood issues, you've got the intersections and the problem areas listed on there just about every time we get a two-inch or three-inch worth of rain. I mean, you don't need a consultant to address these intersections.
A consultant's not going to be used to tell us which projects to fund. They're going to be used to help analyze how much our current revenue stream will support as far as bonds and what the different variables of a rate increase, what different levels of an increase would be needed to support a greater, a, a larger amount of bond projects. So, for instance, do we want to bond twenty million dollars worth of projects, or do we want to bond sixty million dollars worth of projects? And how much of an increase is needed to do those different levels? That, that's what we want the consultant to help analyze and support and present. We certainly are capable of telling you where the projects are needed.
I just think that's, you know, where we're talking about, budget and, and rate increases. I mean, that is the number-one concern that I talk to everybody, and I know in my district. And I, I know Sam has some, some concerns, and so has Ed. But, you know, the, the, this is a really visual problem that people deal with every time that we have a heavy rain. And, you know, it's, we owe them, we owe them to the public, all this council, all, every council member in here, that we do something about it ASAP, because I don't know that I can wait another budget year. I think we, you know, but it, because if all the projects go to design and go to bidding and go to, and it'll be another two or three years before anything is done, so.
Is it the suggestion of a majority of council that we move forward with an internal discussion of a number? I know a number's been proposed without a rate consultant.
I think, I think, I think the concern Mr. Bedura's, um, is laying out is just time. Time is of, is of the essence. I mean, we don't need a consultant to tell us that two million dollars a year will, will produce enough bonding capacity, about twenty, twenty-three million bucks. We know that.
Absolutely.
So, but, but obviously, I'm sure there's a whole lot more due diligence that needs to go in there. Are some of these projects already engineered and, and, and ready to go?
Yes, sir. Many of these projects are, no, sir, many of them are not engineered. We obviously do stormwater CIP every year, but we fund those. So, the projects for this current year are underway. It's future projects that we'd be pulling forward.
And certainly, and certainly, we want to make sure we do it right. I mean, obviously, you want to make sure that, that you're just not following your gut and backing along with the numbers that, that we run up here. But it would be great to know, as you've identified here, some of the key projects that we know are repetitive challenges in the, in the, in the southeast and Shandon and North Columbia and everything else. And maybe if we can, maybe start running two parallel tracks, if, if there's some engineering, or some work that needs to be done now so that we're not at June thirtieth and just starting on, on, on projects, if there's some way which we can move quicker. It's just, just a thought, however, we can.
I think, Mr. Mayor, the, the-
Is that fair?
I think I can probably say maybe what Ms. Gentry is more hesitant to say, that, you know, quite frankly, when we've done every rate study in the world and every due diligence in the world to have rate increases as needed, then that, that doesn't always go down the track or the path that we thought.
You mean, that always gets four votes, you mean?
Yes, sir. And so, I think we can absolutely, I mean, that's not a problem to pull projects and let you all know what we can get done. And I do think it needs to be across the city, you know, not necessarily in specific areas, but a fair determination of what we could get done in a timely manner across the city. And if council feels comfortable with us making some determinations with Mr. Palin on what we could bond without going through a study, I, I, we just need that direction from you. And if we would actually move in that direction.
Let me just continue, let me just continue that discussion because the, the, is it eight or ten intersection or, or flood points that you share with everybody about the, you know, any idea how much those immediate relief or immediate intersections that we can address flood would, I mean, is it ten million, twenty million, thirty million? I mean, that's, and I understand, I can't pinpoint you to exact number or exact figure, but is it an estimate? Like the mayor said, the time of essence now is because every time we get an inch worth of rain, everybody is panicking about whether Five Points is going to flood or the intersection of Maple and Monroe is going to flood. I mean, that's, and that's the ones I see every single time we get a little bit of rain. So, out of the list that you have on the danger list or the watch list for the intersections, is there any way possible that you give us an idea whether it's going to cost from ten to twenty million or, or twenty to thirty million or anything like that?
It's important when you're looking at drainage not to do isolated pockets because if you solve a problem at one intersection, you're going to cause a problem elsewhere if you don't solve a larger segment. For instance, I, I know specifically you're talking about a few of the flood-prone intersections in Shandon. If you only fix that intersection, you're going to push that water either upstream or downstream. So, it's important that you look at at least a large segment of pipe. The Shandon Drainage Project is estimated at twelve million dollars. That's the hard, putting new pipe in the ground for the system. We've got some projects, you know, Tanglewood, Golden Acres, Harlem Heights. I mean, we've got sixty million dollars worth of projects identified.
Sixty.
We could likely do, we, we could stage that. Maybe a low-ball estimate would be twenty million dollars if we want to solve a large portion of the problems. You will not hear staff ever say, "We will solve Five Points. We will make it better, and we'll make a difference," and we're continuing to do that. We've got some retention facilities that are being looked at, and they are being designed right now along the Rocky Branch Basin. That will really address some of the problems. But it's hard with drainage to say you will ev, you will solve all drainage problems forever and ever because, as you know, the intensity of the rain is going to depend on how much water falls into that pipe and if the pipe can carry it or not. Our pipes are typically designed for a ten-year storm. If you get anything above that, they're, they may be overwhelmed. That's typical. That, that's not under design. That's pretty typical. You're not going to design a system for a hundred-year storm because you can't afford to do that. But certainly, you can look at some storage in strategic places, and we are doing that.
All right, Mr. Duval.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we've got two conversations going here. The staff is-
The staff has asked that we allow them to get a rate study done to see if we do need the $2 increase to do the project and maybe there are other ways using the funds that we have existing to take care of the $60 million potential. And I think for political purposes, that all of us would be well-served if we had an outside expert come in and look at the funds available now and what they can do versus adding two more dollars to the citizens. We were very hesitant to add 4.2% to the water bills and we need to be just as vigilant if we're going to add $2 to the, to the stormwater. Let's get the political cover of having an outsider come in and look at it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Davis?
The reason I've, only had two questions on that. I, I may be wrong, but I think that we've, with your help as a staff, have really gone through this from top to bottom, looking at the projects that need to be done, at potential costs and then impact as a result of the rate increase. And I thought that we, based on the consultations we've had and the discussions, that we could, I mean, you as a staff could discern from all of that, one, the, again, the projects that, if you were rating them, are anywhere from 1 to 10 or 1 to 20, and the projected cost. So if we, if we know that, in my mind, we can have a discussion with you guys and then, and agree based on your recommendations again and, you know, I think we already know what the projected dollar figure is. If I can have, if I can have that kind of discussion, knowing what, for example, I know about what is reported elsewhere in terms of flood-prone intersections and so forth, and what I do know in the northern part of the city, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I do know with those projects that I'm advocating for based on the complaints I get and what I see, and when I go out doing storms, there are some projects there that, you know, should have been, for whatever reason, fixed a long time ago, would never seem to get to it. And I don't see the price tag on those, some of those, a couple of those projects that I see on some of the other ones. So I would think that, and then truly understanding that, and you're absolutely right, it's not where you see the flood, the water during a storm or heavy rain, it's elsewhere. Most folks know that you should start downhill versus uphill. And so with those projects, knowing how long they've been on the table, I would, I would think that they would definitely be a priority and based on what I've seen, the cost is not that much to me that it would, you know, require a rate increase. But as I said, I'm willing to have those discussions. But I, I think that based on, maybe I'm out there somewhere, but based on the conversations we've had, the consultations we've seen and the charting we've done, we can, y'all can make that decision, but, you know.
And staff has not yet said we would have to have a rate increase. We certainly recognize there's a lot of projects that need to be done. We would need to start with the baseline being our current revenues and what type of bond would it support.
Yeah, I think, I think that was a long way of, a very long way of all was saying yes. Let's see if we could run as many concurrent tracks. And I wonder, is it, could it also be someone's role, maybe not the rate consultant, of course, but seeing other potential sources of revenue that might be able to allow us to get some of these things done in lieu of a bond? So those things that we don't have to finance if they're other potential sources. I'm not sure if, through some of our other flood relief efforts that might help us pay for some of these projects. $60 million worth of projects, would those projects upon completion make an appreciable difference?
Absolutely.
We see, they would. I mean, so, so we need to prioritize getting this, getting this done and just, just making it happen. So, yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you all would like to entertain going into executive session?
Sure. Not that simple anymore, you need a little more detail than that.
I've moved that, you got it, Sam?
Go ahead.
I've moved that we go into executive session for discussions of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements, renovation of 1800 Main Street, receipt of legal advice relating to pending threatening or potential claim, Glassmire v City of Columbia, Boland v City of Columbia, discussions of employment of employee.
Second. Any discussion? Shane, I move the previous question. Clerk Callerall.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.